Calling the Temecula Planning Commission, regular meeting of August 21st, 2024 to order. And we will begin with a flag salute by Commissioner Ruiz.
Thank you. If you guys are able to, please stand, remove your hats and join me in the pledge this evening. Ready, begin.
(inaudible)
Thank you. We will have a roll call now.
Chair Hegel.
Here.
Commissioner Ruiz.
Here.
Solis.
Here.
Turley Trejo.
Here.
And Watts.
Here.
All are present.
Okay. Do we have any public comments today?
We have received none for non-agenda.
Then I'm going to skip that. I'm going to go on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to 6:00 PM and submitted to Planning Commission at temeculaca.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. So, we have the minutes and that is it. It's on the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the item.
And I'll second.
Okay. We have a first and second by Commissioner Ruiz and Commissioner Turley Trejo. So, we'll have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? None. Five to zero. It passes. Okay, we're going to go on to public hearings. And do we have any speakers? For the public hearings?
We will after, but we're going to call items two, three, and four together and then...
Right. Okay. All right. I'll read, I'll read this and then I'll turn it over. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing or may appear to be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to the Planning Commission at temeculaca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with a decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate community development department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. And before we announce the, the three items, I need to recuse myself. Due to I own preferred stock in a sister company. And I will leave the dais and turn it over to Commissioner Turley Trejo.
Okay. So, we have items two, three, and four that we are going to hear together. Planning application number PA 23-0438. A development plan for Village A of the Alter specific plan to allow for 146 detached single-family and duplex homes and one park. APNs. Do I need to read all those numbers?
It's not necessary.
Okay. And then item number three, planning application number PA 23-0439. A development plan for Village B of the Alter specific plan to allow for 109 detached, single-family and duplex homes and one park. And then item number four, planning application number PA 23-0440. A development plan for Village C of the Alter specific plan to allow for 45 buildings containing 212 attached row homes. And we have Scott. Thanks Scott, for the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson and Planning Commissioners. As you stated, this is PA 23-0438, 0439, and 0440 for Alter Villages A, B, and C, which are the first three villages of Alter. So, as you did state, PA 23-0438 is a development plan to allow for 146 detached, single-family and duplex homes and one park within Village A. 23-0439, development plan to allow for 109 detached, single-family and duplex homes and one park within Village B. And 23-0440, development plan to allow for 45 buildings containing 212 attached row homes in Village C. Something I just want to state is, you know, even though this was submitted in November of last year, staff's actually been working with Brookfield since early 2022, just on the project in general. So, you have, you know, me and Ron and Valerie and Matt. We've been working for well over two years on this project. So, just a little bit of further background for you. It's not, it's not just been a seven-month project. So, a little bit of project history. On December 12th of 2017, the City of Temecula City Council approved a general plan amendment and a tentative track map. January 9th of 2018, the City of Temecula Council approved the Alter specific plan. And the approved specific plan allows for 870 to 1750 total dwelling units of project build-out. 467 total units of that allowed are proposed within these three planning applications tonight. So, it's important to note that the tentative map and specific plan, they basically set the general layout for the project. You know, the sizes, the boundaries of the villages, the backbone roadways, the development standards, what types of buildings you're allowed to do. So, that's, that's all been on the books since 2017 and 18. So, we're here tonight to implement what that was. In addition, all the environmental work was done at that time. So, all the work that's being proposed tonight falls within the allowances of the approved environmental, environmental impact report.
Yeah. And if I may, so for the benefit of the Planning Commission and also members of the audience, we know there was a lot of online discussion today. So, we just wanted to add to that context that back in 2017, when the project was approved, there was a general plan amendment, the specific plan which set the zoning. There was a tentative track map and an environmental impact report that was done. So, in the environmental impact report, there was a traffic study. There was a water supply assessment that was completed. There were a number of environmental studies that looked at the ability for this project, this 270 acres called Alter, to accommodate these homes. In addition, as part of the development agreement, it was important to the city to get infrastructure before the developer got permits. So, in the development agreement and in the conditions of approval, the developer will have to put in certain infrastructure improvements, widening streets, installing streetlights, and then building a western bypass. As part of the project, there are different thresholds, so we get the infrastructure before they get the building permit. So, I just wanted to provide that additional context.
Thanks, Matt.
All right. So, the project location, I think we all know where Alter is by this point. It's on the west, west, west of Old Town. And then for some context, that is, the star is the location of City Hall. So, Villages A, B, and C. Old Town Temecula is to the bottom of the screen, which would be to the east of this project. These are existing streets in the orange, Ridge Park Drive, Vincent Maraga Drive, and Sixth Street. So, you have Village A, Village B, and then Village C, which is actually broken into three sub-villages, C1, C2, and C3. If you're familiar with the specific plan, Village C1 was the original site of the school site. Once the Temecula Unified School District decided not to build the elementary school, that was able to be built with residential units as well. So, moving on to Village A. So, it is 12.78 dwelling units to the acre with 146 homes. There are 78 three-story detached, single-family homes ranging in size from 2011 to 2,213 square feet. And there are 68 two- and three-story duplex homes ranging in size from 1,665 to 2,384 square feet. Amenities of this village include a one-acre neighborhood park and small and medium open space areas. So, this is the site plan of Village A. So, the yellow homes, also shown with the arrows, are the single-family detached. And the purple are the duplexes. And then that is the one-acre park. This project takes its access off of Ridge Park Drive and the western bypass corridor at the starred locations. Terms of architecture, there are two architectural styles in Village A. So, something to keep in mind is we're going to do a lot of talk about architecture tonight. Alter isn't like the other specific plans like Rancho Highland, Somers Bend, even the new Paseo de Sol, where you approved the track map last hearing. There's no set styles, like you have to do Spanish, you have to do Craftsman, you have to do Monterey, whatever. You're allowed pretty much to do whatever you want to do. I tell, it's similar to Uptown. I tell the developers, you know, do something that looks really interesting and looks really good, looks really cool. So, keep that in mind as we move forward. It's some vernacular you probably haven't heard before. So, modern farmhouse for the duplexes and then progressive agrarian for the detached, single-family units. So, in Village A, this is the three-story duplex. This would be the front elevation, shown here in red, what you would be looking at. And then some of the design elements are vertical board and batten siding, a columned recessed entry, wood railings, and then overall neutral colored stucco. As you move to the rear, other than the entry that you would get on the front of the building, you're getting all the other design elements. And then the internal, shown here in red, so that's if you actually get into the motor court, so you're in the middle of, of the development. Moving on to the two-story duplex, very similar, it's just two stories instead of three stories, shown here in red, the view that you'd be getting. Again, the vertical board and batten siding, column recessed entry, gable roof, and accent colored doors. Moving on to the rear, again, shown in red, everything about the entryway, and then the internal as well. For the single-family detached, this is a pretty cool graphic that we have. So, it shows this is what a street scene would look like. So, you'd have a Plan 2, then a Plan 3 with a roof deck, with a Plan 1 in between, another Plan 2, and then the Plan 3 standard. So, you see the Plan 3 standard and then the roof deck, how much it changes in elevation just by having a roof deck instead of a standard elevation. How this would look like on the street, and this is actually the location, right where these units would be. Some design elements would be the flat tile roof, wood awnings, horizontal siding, and inset siding. This would be the rear of the building, so your entrances are off the street on these buildings, so this would actually be in the alleyway. Shown here in red where the garages are. So, again, the flat tile roof, wood awnings, horizontal siding, and metal railings. So, this is showing when you have an internal side elevation. So, you're in between the buildings, you're not up against a street or a public access. And then this shows the difference when you are up against a, a street or Paseo. And you can see the difference between the two. On the enhanced elevation, you have the horizontal siding where you don't on the internal. Stone base, vertical siding, and some metal awnings. You can see what it means to have an enhanced entry. So, you know, if you've driven through heirloom or some of the newer communities, density decor, and you drive on like those loop roads, so that's where you're going to have those enhanced sides. So, and this is a rendering of Village A. So, on the single-family would be on the right side and the duplex are on the left. And then just to blow up exactly the view that you're taking from. And then a different view in Village A, you have the duplexes are located on the right side. So, the Village A park, so this is the one-acre park. The specific plan requires a .95 acre park, so they've come up with a one-acre park. In addition to on-street parking, some of the amenities are picnic tables, a lawn area, a play area with a play structure, bike racks, and a community library. So, moving on to Village B.
Before you move on to Village B, can you just go back to the square footage on, on A? Is that possible?
The building or the buildings?
The square footage of the, yeah, on the, it was like one of the very first slides. Just the square footage. You have the total of the homes and the square footage. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So, Village B is 15.48 dwelling units per acre. 109 homes, 21 of those are three-story detached, single-family homes. Same square footage as Village A, 2011 to 2,213. And there's 88 three-story duplex homes, 1,775 square feet to 1,978. The amenities in this village include a .65 acre park and small, medium, and large open space areas. The site plan for Village A. In the purple box, you have the single-family detached, and then the rest of the Village A is the duplexes. And then you have the neighborhood park in the middle. For the access, there's two access points off Alter Vista. Terms of architecture, there's two architectural styles in this village as well. You have abstract traditional for the duplexes and the progressive agrarian for the detached, single-family. We don't need to go through the detached single, single-family again because it's the exact same architecture from Village A. So, for the three-story duplex, it's the abstract traditional. So, this would be the front of the building, shown in red again. And you have the horizontal siding, low-pitched gable roof, metal awnings, and again, the neutral colored stucco. This goes back to what we were talking about earlier, when you have enhanced elevation. So, the internal sides would be if you're not next to a public street. And then when you get next to a public street, which on both of these would be on each side of these buildings, that's where you have the horizontal, extra horizontal siding, additional articulation, vertical siding, and metal awning. Terms of what Village B will look like, so in this one, you have the single-family on the left and the duplex on the right, and then the view that we're taking. And then this view is from the middle of the park, looking out at the duplexes. So, the Village B park, as stated earlier, it's .65 acres. There's the on-street parking for the park, the shade structure, a lawn area, a DG path, play area, and then some boulders. For Village C. So, when we talk, when we talk about Village C, that's C1 plus C2 plus C3 all put together in one. So, that's 21.81 dwelling units per acre, 212 homes, 101 three-story row homes, which is exclusive to Village C1, 1,404 to 1,710 square feet. And then 111 two-story row homes, which is Village C2 plus 3. In this, the amenities include direct access to the five-acre Central Park, and that's direct access from C2 and 3. And then, again, small, medium, and large open space areas. So, for the site plan, the orange to the north of the slide is the three-story row homes. And then to the left is the tan, that's where the two-story row homes come into play. And then for access, there's two points of access off of Alter Vista into C1. And then A Street, which you can see here bisects C2 and 3, and so there's two points of access into each of those sub-villages. So, again, there's two architectural styles in Village C as well. There is contemporary provincial for the three-story row homes, which are in Village C1. And then transitional homestead for the two-story row homes in Village C2 plus 3. So, what we're going to be looking at here is the five-plex, and I want to show exactly where this one would be located within C1. So, this architectural style has a couple of different front elevations, depending on where it's located within the village. There's a standard and enhanced with brick, a side entry, an elevation that has porches, and there's a porches with brick. So, we're not going to go through all of them, but we'll just take a look at a couple. So, again, this one's located on the corner of Alter Vista and the western bypass, which would be visible to the public. So, you have a blend of roof forms, the S tile roof material, enhanced brick material on this, and then the awnings. And you have a trellis in the middle of the elevation. This would be considered your more traditional of the standard ones. So, this is if you have a Paseo running down the middle of the two buildings. So, this shows the buildings in red is where this would, this would be located. And then this would be if they're sharing a drywall, so you would have the garages on each side. And then in addition to that, in order to break up the massing of the building, there is landscaping that's required and proposed between all the garages. And then moving on to enhanced elevations for this. So, this shows where buildings are next to each other, so it's a standard elevation. And then if you have a street entry, you're shown in red across the street. You'd have your, obviously, the entry door with an awning, additional shed roof, and then an additional change of building plane. So, for Village C1, this would be the, what it would look like. This is if you're on the perimeter of the project or the three-story product. And then this would be from the interior. For the two-story row homes, there are three, four, five, and six complexes for the two-story row homes. This is the three-plex and four-plex. So, you have the dominant hip roof profile, metal bracket and awning, siding insets, corbels, and horizontal siding. So, as we move on to the five and six complexes, all the architectural elements are here that you saw on the three and four-plexes, just not specifically pointed out. So, still the hip roof profile, the metal bracket and awning, siding insets, corbels, and the horizontal siding. So, the enhanced, in the traditional homestead, so this is where you would have the traditional here in red. And then on this, you would have the upgraded because you have the street in between. And then on Building 8 shown there, on the right of Building 8, is actually where the Central Park would be located. So, all those elevations adjacent to the Central Park also would have the enhanced elevations. So, you have the roof line of wall articulation, horizontal siding, siding insets, and then the corbels again. This would be the view looking into Village C towards the two-story product. And then this would be internal to the project. And then a view if you were in the Central Park, looking towards the project. So, moving on to the open space plan and amenities. So, this is something that's really cool. So, the Alter Group, Brookfield, figured out a way, they came up with a master open space plan that basically the goal of this was if you were at the very north or top of this project and you wanted to get to the five-acre park, instead of just having sidewalks and streets with nothing to do in between, is how do you get there? Walkability, fitness, doing all these things. So, all these areas here in red are small, open space areas. There could be some bitch seating, there could be some views. The areas in purple are medium, open space areas, could be some group seating, a lawn area. Then the area in blue are the large, open space areas, shaded seating, enhanced paving, play lawn area. So, that's, in addition to that, you know, we have the one-acre park, .65 acre park, ultimately leading to the five-acre park. And that shows the location of those. So, in addition to that, you have the class, class 1 bike trail that's along the western bypass. And then you have sidewalks, obviously, that connect the villages. So, the small, open space areas, that could include those boulders that we saw earlier, bench, shade trees, DG, DG paving. Moving to the medium, open space area, could contain another community library, lounge seating, shade trees, play area. And then in a large, open space area, bench seating, large lawn area, lounge area, and those boulders again. So, on November 1st of last year, the project was presented by the applicant to the subcommittee, who was Turley Trejo and Commissioner Watts. They included the architecture, streetscape, and the Central Park. The subcommittee provided feedback to the applicant that has been incorporated into these development plans. Terms of CECA for this project is section 15162 for subsequent EIRs and negative declaration, basically stating that the project is consistent with the previously adopted Alter Environmental Impact Report. With that, staff does recommend the Planning Commission approve PA 23-0438, PA 23-0439, and PA 23-0440, subject to the conditions of approval. In addition to that, there were, we did receive one letter. It was placed on the dais before all of you. That concludes my report. I'm here for questions. Brookfield actually has a small presentation to do as well, and then they have their entire development team here as well.
Thank you so much, Scott. And I noticed that there's some material boards back here, right?
There's a lot of material boards back there.
I might want to pass those around. And so, we'll go ahead and start. Adam, you have some questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Is there a rendering at all of Village C and B, like that seems, like seeing how that would look with those two together? Is that provided at all, anywhere?
So, I put this up. So, were you asking for the rendering?
Well, just trying to get an idea, you know, A and B have kind of a similar look, C's got a, a different, a different look to it. I just didn't know if there was any kind of drawing or, or proposed that would show what they would look to side by side.
No, just for the actual individual villages.
Got it. Okay. And then a couple of questions if I, if I can, and if they need to be deferred to the client, or the applicant, I'm sorry, let me know. One of the major challenges with housing in general right now is fire insurance. This is back up and against the hill over there. Obviously, there are certain materials, but without, you know, being cost prohibitive materials. But was materials, landscaping, was insurance taken into consideration for some of the designs there?
We will let the applicant answer that. However, we have had conversations, and they've had conversations with the Old Town Local Advisory Committee, and they are well aware of that.
Okay. I'm just, hopefully it's an insurable product or something like that. And then along those lines, again, maybe back to the applicant, but there's obviously solar mandates. There's no solar in any of these renderings. I'm assuming there's, will be covered as appropriate, where as needed for...
It will be covered per the California Green Code.
Okay. And then was there anything to address charging stations for any electrical vehicles along with, within there? Is that going to be left at each individual home, or like some of the three-plex, four-plex, five-plex, six-plex? Is that all just going to be left up to the individual owner?
Those would be individual homeowner. Once you get to like the community, their rec center, that's where they would have their own requirements for that. own requirements for that.
Okay, okay, that's all for now, thank you.
Down here, Fernando?
Yeah. My question is looking at the large site plan, the one that shows all the villages, and how you mentioned that there was a connection from Village A to Village C. Is there, like, is there, would it be connected like through a sidewalk, like where you can go from one point to the very last point?
So it'd be connected through sidewalks or paseos that are within the individual villages, or if you, like I said, if you were on your bike, you could get onto the Class One Bike Path that runs the extent of Western Bypass? So there's a couple of different options for you to take.
And the other question is if there's a rendering from the ground level looking up into how the elevations would look? Do you have a rendering of that?
Like from Old Town, or?
Or from, from the bottom, looking up?
We don't have, just the internal for each village.
Okay, I think, I think that's it. Thank you.
Gary?
I'm not sure if I have a question, but I do have a concern. Everything that we've looked at in, so far, is two and three stories, mostly with parking below, and I'm a little bit concerned with the fact that these villages present a real hurdle, I think, for those that aren't interested or cannot negotiate upper stories. So I'm hoping, I know not in these three villages, but I'm hoping as this project continues to build, that that concern is addressed as far as addressing disabled or people with accessibility issues, because I, I can see where a neighborhood could just evolve without a certain component of our population simply because of physical barriers. So just a concern, it has not to do with what's presented so far, but certainly in the overall scheme of things, that's something I hope can be addressed in some way. But that's it, I don't have any questions. I'll be Scott, nice presentation.
Any other questions? I just, and this might be a question for the applicant, just making sure that the applicant talks about the five and six plex, you know, and kind of how that works. And the doors, there's going to be different colored doors, right? Didn't you say that?
Yes.
You did say that, I heard that. So, all right, so I get, that might be a question for the applicant.
So the door colors are on those material boards?
Oh, they are?
Yes.
Oh, okay, look at you, way ahead of me, I like it.
If I can ask a follow-up question, what in relation to the five and six plexes?
Yeah, I think just because I've never seen anything bigger than a four-plex, so I'm just like, whoa.
Heirloom has five plexes. They're the ones on the, if you drive on Temecula Center Drive, across from Audi and Mercedes, they're the three stories, five plexes.
I think we have six plexes too, behind Home Depot by the Paloma del Sol Sports Park.
Are those six plexes?
Yeah, overlooking the park.
I need to go look at them, see what that looks like. Yeah, it seems very spread out, large. So that was a question I had. And then also kind of, I think everybody, or a couple of my colleagues asked this question about, can you put up this slide again, just looking at all of the villages that we're looking at tonight, that we can, with, do you have it kind of with the homes, or you don't? Oh, just like that, yeah. Okay, all right. Any other questions before we have the applicant come up? Okay. Grab my gavel over here, all right. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and we'll invite the applicant up. It's your time to shine.
Good evening, Madam Chair, good evening Commissioners, thank you for having us this evening, and thank you for your time. We also want to thank staff this evening, they did an incredible job helping us through this process. It's been more than two, two long years of work just on these homes alone, in addition to many other aspects of the project, so we're very thankful for that. And Scott, excellent presentation, thank you for making my job easy. We'll keep it light tonight and relatively short. I'd like to introduce Nick Mania, who's with WHA, he's our architect. And then if we have additional questions this evening, we do have our landscape architect, engineer, and site planning team here. I'm Colin Cook, I'm with Brookfield Properties, and I'm the applicant or developer this evening. Again, we have a quick slide deck for you, just to touch upon some items that maybe we can add to or offer clarification in so addressing. So do my best here, see if I can get this to work. So from our aspect, and again, maybe tangential to what Scott had mentioned, we'd like to give a little bit of a project overview. He did a great job addressing the entitlements and the history of the project, we don't want to beat that to death, that's, it's a long time coming, said another way. We would like to talk a little bit about our potential home buyers and the market, and maybe the genesis for this product and why we're selecting it, a little bit about the products, which Nick will tell you about the homes and why we've gone with these architectural styles, having the creative license that we've had through this process, outreach and timing, so a little bit about our efforts within the community, and where the project would go from here if approved this evening, and hopefully answer any questions you have thereafter. So at a high level, again, Scott did an excellent job of covering this, we're working within a specific plan that does have some, some ranges of density, and as we think about the project from north to south, we're going from Village A all the way down to Village G, we have less density in the north and south end of the project, and more density at the core, which is C North in this case. So we are working within parameters that were defined by the specific plan. We are keenly interested in making this project walkable and a complement to Old Town. We think it's truly important that our homeowners, our future homeowners, be able to get to Old Town, and people who are in Old Town be able to come up into the community. It's not meant to be a one-way street. We have a five-acre public park, we have multiple smaller parks, and while they're all private, they are open to the public. So no gating systems, they're meant to be, everyone's meant to be equal and a participant in those parks. Our product selection is designed around our potential home buyer, as we understand the marketplace here in Temecula. We feel that we're building for families and for a workforce. The Village A and B homes were designed to be homes that would accommodate families, and also accommodate mixed, multi-generational families. We do have some living down to address your question on access. Also, the three-story towns in C one are ADA compliant, and we have accessible units. Nick, you want to add to that?
No, actually, I was going to touch a little bit about the living down. Surprisingly, even when you get to this level of density, it's very challenging to provide that livability, but we have at least one of the plans that have a couple of bedrooms down with the living, so it does help the buyer that's looking for that, that plan.
Thank you, Nick. And I think that's important to reiterate, is we do have a density threshold, so there's a minimum that we can't go below, and when we start looking at those single-floor units, it's really hard to get anything above a ten density, which is what our minimum is here in this case for most part. In additional, we wanted to talk a little bit about parking. So every home in the proposed Village A, B, and C has a two-car garage. In addition to that, we've carved out adequate parking within the communities and along the streets. So in total, I believe, we're overparked by about eighty spots, plus we have some parking on Alter Vista and in other areas of the community that's not counted towards this project. And then last, I already mentioned it, parks, 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 we've got nine acres of parks just in what really is almost the first half of the project alone. When we think about total space and total number of homes that are proposed, it's maybe a little less than half at the end of the day, but we're about halfway there. So a little bit of background information, and hopefully this helps to explain a little bit as to why we're selecting the home types we are at this point in time in the market. So right now, we have a number of communities around Temecula, which have active selling master plans within Temecula, not so much. We've got Summers Bend, of course, we've got Heirloom, and then we've got the end of Paseo del Sol, is it Paseo or Paloma? Paseo. So the Alter Master Plan community would be an injection of significant number of homes to the community, and we know that housing is of demand here in Temecula. So right now, between now and 2029, we would be bringing almost five hundred homes to the market, and again, within the confines of the specific plan, and, yeah, I'll say no more. Nick, can I ask you to share a little bit about all the home types in one setting?
Sure. So we'll just kind of go through these really quick, but you've got to already, thank you, Mr. Cooper, for presenting, that was a beautiful presentation, it covered a lot of ground, so we'll just skim through these. But between the five different product types, you have the two, three, two and three-story duplex more court. It does happen to have a plan that has livability at the ground level. You have the three-story, single-family detached homes, three-story duplexes, and of course, the two-story townhomes, they do vary between three, four, five, and six-plex buildings. But each unit does live independent and have, we pay close attention to those details to make sure they announce the individuality of each of the homes and the units and front doors. And then, of course, jewel of, is the three-story Product Five, that's, we really love the architectural style statement that that one's making.
Thank you, Nick. Moving on, we thought we'd throw some numbers out there and give you some statistics, we know that some people love numbers. So to speak a little bit about the homes themselves and the variety of floor plans and houses we're offering, we've got units ranging from about fourteen hundred square feet up to twenty-two hundred square feet. Again, some of that is to conform with the density requirements, and in part is also to offer affordability and attainability. We know that Temecula has been a city that is largely focused on suburban growth and development, and as we've seen home prices escalate and rates go up, we recognize to offer a more affordable and attainable product, we've happened to go down a little bit in size. And so we're still trying to program a house that is a house that will be comfortable for a four, five, six-person family, and yet also fit the price range, and that's something that's important to us. Nick, anything more on that? Okay. And then additionally, going back to some of the other statistics we decided earlier, parking, we are overparked by seventy-six spots. Open space, again, very important to this community, we've got in these three villages alone about a hundred and thirty thousand square feet of extra open space, and I think when you look at the project as a whole, it's important to remember, in addition to that, we have a two-hundred-and-seventy-acre project, and we're setting aside almost ninety acres of open space, which will be conserved in perpetuity. Additionally, we're bringing on slightly more parks than required, we've, we've remained within the allowable densities, and in some instances, well below them, and we've got a combination of single-family duplex, or detached duplex units, and also attached units, which is a variety of housing types, and caters to our different home buyers and future homeowners. Nick, maybe on the architecture?
Sure. So I'll just briefly go through this again, the architecture, you've seen it already, but do want to make the statement that we have over recent years seen an interest in our buyer shift into more transitional styles, if you will, more clean, and that's what we chose to do for the villages here at Alter. But at the same time, we didn't want to forget about the old charm and some of the detailing of, you know, the timeless design, that the composition of the architecture that brings here.
Thank you, Nick. Moving on a little bit to our outreach within the community, we think it's important always to be a good stakeholder and a good neighbor. So in, in preparation for this project and in bringing these homes to the market, we thought it important to go door-to-door in Old Town, so we were able to meet with a number of our adjacent neighbors and also people in the general vicinity. We handed out a informational flyer, so that people were able to have our contact information and contact us at any point in time. We also set up a website for inquiries, and to date through the website, have about a hundred and sixty inquiries relative to the project, and six hundred additional inquiries relative to interest in new homes within the project. We got a lot of questions, and we think we adequately answered them. The majority of the questions were relative to construction, and also some of the infrastructure that's being proposed, and what that was going to do to traffic. As Scott mentioned, it's infrastructure before homes here. So we are very focused on the benefits that Western Bypass will bring, and reducing traffic within town, within Old Town itself, and at some point, maybe off the fifteen as well. Addition to that, we have a number of Class One Bike Trail Systems, walking trails, hiking trails throughout the community, and also we'll be bringing up traffic from First Street and Pujo, where we'll be adding a signal as well there. Additionally, a number of routeabouts within the community and other signal requirements. General briefings, again, as a stakeholder, we feel it's important to reach out to some of our neighbors and constituents. We've worked closely with the City of Temecula Homeless Outreach Team. The project was a challenge for the city, I know, and the homeless, certainly, it's close to Old Town, it's easy to hide out in there, so we did a lot of work to help these people who are within the project, and also to make sure that it was secure and sound. We've worked closely with the Boys and Girls Club of Southwest County, who have a club immediately next to us, and we'd like to help them get that club back to working order. Old Town Temecula Association will be giving them a debrief tomorrow night, and work closely with the Temecula Chamber of Commerce. Last, we've worked, again, with the city team, City of Temecula Outreach Team, Economic Development, planning committees. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Watts, for your time previously, and also with the Old Town Local Advisory Committee. And a little bit about timing, as with any development, this is subject to a number of variables. Right now, we anticipate that we'll see grading go through early 2025, improvements starting in the middle of 2025, and homes starting in 2026, leading to homeowners at the end of 2026. And the project, this is a long shot, but if it were to move at the rate we anticipated to, might wrap up sometime in 2032. That's the project in its entirety. So that's our guess, and we'll see how it goes. And I think last, just some closing comments, we feel like these are, these are new homes that are important to the community, we feel that the infrastructure will result in less traffic, more order, and better walkability. We do think that this is a huge commitment to preservation of open space within the City of Temecula. We hope that we're providing workforce housing specifically for those who work at the hospital, who work for our dealerships, who work at Camp Pendleton, all over. The Inland Empire is a blossoming hub of industry, and we know that we're going to need more and more homes for people in the workforce, and they need to be attainable and priced right. Last, we think it's a great place to come and enjoy, public parks, trail system, easy access to Old Town, and they should be immensely complementary to each other. With that, I thank you for your time, and I do have some questions from earlier, I can broach those now, or I can address any other questions that the commission might have.
Thank you for that presentation. We'll start on this end this time, Fernando, you have some questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about parking. How many open space parkings for guests will you be providing for Village A, B, and C?
Nick, do you have that number?
Yeah, guest, guest parking spaces.
Guest parking?
Yeah.
If you could, I'm sorry, if you could come up to this mic for the record?
Good evening. We, for Village A, we have six head-in parking and thirty-seven parallel parking spaces within Village A. And then there are also two-hundred-and-ninety-two covered garage spaces within Village A.
Say that again, how many, how many open, not the enclosed, just for like guests?
Forty-three. Forty-three.
Forty-three? Forty-three?
That's in Village A.
Village A. In Village B, there are 18. Village C one, there are 23. And in Village C two and three, there are 19 head in and 23 parallel. About 42.
So, over 100 in total?
I believe so, yes.
And we are, we are in excess of the requirement?
Yes.
And then another question is, I noticed that there's a lot of walking, which is great. In that walking area, are you providing canopy, like some type of canopy landscape?
And I'll ask Chris to come up and give specifics on the tree types. And if you have any questions, that we're happy to answer them. I think it's important to note, and this goes back to the earlier question on wildfire, we do have some strict limitations on the tree types we can propose here and we can use. We are in a high fire severity zone. So, we're very careful about tree placement, tree size, whether it's deciduous or not, tree litter, tree leaf litter, a number of items that are very important to us. So, we're placing as many canopy trees where we can with respect to homes and safety.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you.
Village C and the large open space area. Wonderful, I love it. Can never get as much, as too much open space in my book, as you well know, hear me say it over and over again. But that presents a great opportunity be, to interact with the city when we have the big events, Fourth of July Parade, the Rod Run. There's a great opportunity for a symbiotic relationship where we can build on each, each other. So, that's down the road when you get everything established. But I hope that that's in the plans to work with our Community Service Department to come up with a way to deal with that. Because clearly, on those days, you're going to have a lot of people trying to park up in that neighborhood without question. But anyhow, I hope that that is, that is something that's in the plans once everything is there. The other thing I'll say, do you have any, anything involved with the purchase process that would inform a buyer of the wildland urban interface that they're entering into? And if you do, could you explain that real quick? What, what sort of instrument or implementation program to address the wildlife concerns that we're going to have? They're right up next to clearly an area that's going to be protected forever. So, I'm just curious what we've got in place already and then I will address that.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for your questions, Commissioner Watts. First, on the five acre public park, just so you know, we're already working with staff on that. We'll be bringing development plan in for first to middle likely next week. So, we've been working closely with them on that. As you mentioned, it's a huge arterial pathway to Old Town and we look forward to that symbiosis. Relative to the urban wildlands interface, one thing that we haven't pointed out here, and it's really more part of the development as a whole, but the entire western edge is bounded by a 10-foot mountain lion fence or wildlife deterrent fence. So, that's a big part of this. Now, conveying that to our homeowners is of course important. And we do that through the, we do that through what we call a supplemental disclosure. So, when they go to purchase the home, first of all, we're informing them of this fact, pointing out that's open space. Hey, there, there's raccoons, there's rattlesnakes, there's scorpions, there's mountain lions, there's everything here. And also, we're putting that in writing. The project itself does have an urban wildlands interface guidelines document that dictates what we can and cannot do. And so, we've got to disclose that and we certainly want to disclose that because we don't want surprise buyers and homeowners.
I would encourage somewhere in the process and someone within the process to maybe reach out and contact our community services folks.
Okay.
And, and what I'm thinking of is, yeah, we're going to have mountain lions and rattlesnakes, et cetera, et cetera, and we have a fence. But we need an educational component, as you alluded to as well. And I see this as an opportunity where the city can help out. Maybe they would have a different opinion in the community service, but they do such a great job in everything they do. And you can look in some of the parks we have where they've got signs up already to deal with, with those problems so that people will hopefully understand the environment they live in and the dangers that that poses, as well as how to react to it so that people don't end up doing things that are detrimental to themselves or to other things as well. So, I would just throw that out. Probably catching our colleagues in the community service section. Although I've hinted at this type of an effort before, so they probably have been expecting something along those lines. But not a condition or anything. It's just a plea that I'm, I'm throwing out there and hope that it's considered by not only you folks, but also the city as well.
Yeah, we would be happy to have that conversation with them.
Anyhow, I love everything you've explained so far. And as I said, we've got a great opportunity to build on it. And I think, really think when this is done, Old Town's just going to be completely different and in a good way. It already is, but I can just see it getting better. But anyhow, those are my comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Gary. All right, Adam.
Yeah, just a couple, thank you guys for your presentation. On one of your opening slides, you had a table that showed your project. Then I think it was Summers Bend and another with some build out. I don't know if those were build out dates. You had 2028 and 2029 listed for A, B, and C in that order. But then on your timeline chart, you had occupancy starting 2026 with completion 2032. Can you just clarify what some of those dates were there?
Yes, I can. And thank you for asking that question. I can understand how that's confusing. So, yes, we would, Homes and Villages A, B, and C would start presumably in 2026 if approved here. They would likely sell for two to three years. So, that takes us to 2028. And then we have the remainder of the community, which is C-South, D, E, and F, and G. And I'm being completely speculative, but based upon our view of the market today, that might be 2032 before we get through all of those remaining five villages.
Got it, okay. So, those initial dates were more kind of sellout completion dates.
Exactly.
And estimate on that.
Yep.
Okay. I also like the fact that you pointed out, you know, close to 500 homes. There, there is a supply challenge in the state of California. Temecula is no, no, no different to that. So, having some homes come in will have a good impact, I think, on, on some prices as well. And you made a couple of comments, which I hope our residents would respond well to, to targeting more that workforce type of housing. I mean, I remember when Alter was first mentioned years ago, that was kind of one of the big draw. Do you have any idea, not holding you anything, but kind of a price point range kind of a thing? Do you have any, any idea where that, where that might line up at all?
Yeah, so trepidation about answering this question always. But as we look at the market today, not knowing where it could end up tomorrow, I think that we see the range of the homes somewhere between 500,000 and 900,000. And that's speculative. But we do think there's definitely an entry level position for the attached product. And as you move into that duplex and single family, you certainly see a cost increase, but that's commensurate with the square footage and the number of bedrooms.
And appreciate, I'm not trying to put you on the, on the spot or hold you to anything there as well. But you know, for those, for those people that are going to watch back or could be listening in or for our audience members here as well, you know, that's, it's just always that topic. And oh, here comes, you know, more million dollar homes coming to Temecula. And you know, from what I was hearing from your presentation, it didn't appear that that's where this was headed. So, I, I think that's a much needed segment of housing. And I appreciate the fact that you guys are leaning toward that as well. And then you touched on the insurance a little bit. Obviously, you guys are, are aware and seem to be working with some limitations for today. Is there, I know there's all kinds of different disclosures that are required when they go out. But I mean, what, what about future growth of the, of the landscape or anything, anything that goes there? You know, I just, I just want to make sure that someone that comes in can still have an insurance policy the following year or five years or 10 years down the road, so.
Of course. Yeah, I could spend here, I could stand here and talk about this for an hour. So, I'll keep it real short. When we look at the community, we are very approving of the design and think there was a lot of forethought in that. Western Bypass Corridor is that edge buffer. And we look at those fire behavior maps. We see most of our fires come from west to east into Temecula because of those prevailing winds. So, we've got a giant buffer there in Western Bypass. We also have slopes above it, which will be graded and then replanted. And that planting is going to be with native plants, but most of those native plants that we're selecting are fire hardy. So, we've doubled our buffer space there. In addition, the HOA has an obligation through the CCNRs to maintain those slopes and keep them thinned into an appropriate level so they don't become fuel for the fires. As we look at the homes themselves, they're all Chapter 7A compliant. And Nick and Nick can certainly speak to this. We're, we picked transitional architecture, not just because we think it's timeless and appropriate and also unique in this setting, but also because it's easy to be 7A compliant with those building materials. And moving on to the insurance component of this, we struggle with this as an industry. We're at the table with Commissioner Lara, day in and day out. That's our insurance commissioner for the state, having these conversations, saying, hey, look, you've got to do something. You've got to get insurers back here. We know that with our, with our efforts with them, we have brought the Fair Plan to a state where everybody who would live in these homes could obtain insurance through the Fair Plan. That would not be our goal. And we continue to push the commission to find other workarounds. We have other means by which to ensure that our homeowners will be able to have policies that are insurable. And it's in our best interest because those policies all drive HOA dues. And those are certainly things that we have to keep to a level that homeowners can, can afford.
Okay. I assumed you guys had it all, you know, part of your, your plan and, and thought through. But just kind of for due diligence, I appreciate the fact that you guys are giving that attention because it is really important. And want to make sure that someone's not forced out of a home just because of insurance.
Couldn't agree more.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. My colleagues have asked really good questions. So, this is a question for the architect. Tell me your name again.
My name is Nick Mania.
Nick Mania, okay. So, Nick, you talked about the five and six plex feeling like individual homes. Tell me how.
So, close attention to detail. When we design these buildings, and rightfully so, you looked at the four or five plexes, like those are large buildings. So, we pay close attention to the massing and the detail. So, the entry doors for each of the homes is highlighted. It has a specific covering. It's a specific distance from the adjacent. So, when we composited those building types, we looked at reorienting the direction orientation. We flipped some homes around to get the separation needed. So, through details and massing really, and the material application.
So, somebody, what about sound, like sound barrier, that kind of thing?
Absolutely. So, that's a good question. So, these townhomes are built with an air gap, what we call in the industry, a two inch air gap. So, that does help with the sound transfer. And there is some code regulation that would also prevent us from doing and cutting any corners or builders that would want to build a single wall. So, there's always double walls in between all the homes in addition to the air gap.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then.
Madam Chair, if I might.
Yeah.
Those are also rated walls, which are also a big component in the fire safety of the building.
They're what walls?
We call them rated walls.
Rated?
Rated. They're typically a two hour rated wall. And that means they'll withstand two hours of fire on one side or another. They limit the transmission of fire, but they also do a great job of attenuating sound.
Okay. And you will have, you talked about homeowner association. You will have that for these homes, right?
That's correct, yes.
That would be really important, like when you have people living so close together.
Yeah, absolutely. In this instance, typically what we see in, in any attached product is that the HOA maintains the exterior of the building. So, that ensures that it's maintained consistently and regularly.
Okay. And then also, you were talking about, so every single home, even these six plexes have a two car garage, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
And not only two car, but they're side by side. So, there's, there's a big difference here because often you'll see in the higher density communities to make up for the space.
They have them like this.
They'll have them like that where another car has to pull out the other one. And often the homeowners will use that for, for storage rather than the cars.
Right.
But when you have them side by side, it just makes a lot, a lot more sense to us. So, they all have side by side.
That's a big deal, okay. And then connection with Old Town. I remember we talked about this a while ago. But can you kind of explain that again, how that is going to be connected? Or if you, do you have a slide? I didn't see one that kind of shows that.
So, yes, we, we can. And I think with Scott's help, we might be able to even give you some imagery, which is going to be much more exciting than me talking through this. But we've worked closely with staff. The specific plan is very specific on that connectivity. It really all stems from Main Street. So, as you come down from City Hall, we go down Main Street, all the way across Pujo. And then as we show here at the very bottom, you can't see it, but we know that Main Street, once it crosses Pujo today, is a dirt parking lot of sorts. So, that is something that we're going to step in and create a pedestrian walkway through. Thank you, Scott.
Okay, so where the red arrow is.
Yep. And right at the base of that red arrow is the beginning of the staircase that would lead into the community with the grand entrance and the welcome to Alter, Alter Central Park sign. We've got an ADA accessible ramp going to the right there and the staircase leading up to the left. That's below Coromel Trail. And then as you move up, you see the staircase extend basically straight up, splitting the project in half. And that takes you into that five acre, five acre public park. And the zigzag path you see moving through that staircase is the accessible ramp moving into the park. So, if you were to go to the front of the building here and look straight out, you would be looking straight up that staircase.
So, it would be, there's the walkable accessible, but not drivable? Like the driving would have to come around, correct?
So, we've got multiple points of connectivity to get into the community.
Right.
One is First Street. So, First Street is going to connect to Coromel Trail. One will be down by the Shell Station, and that's the terminus. That's Western Bypass and the bridge. That's going to, the minute you come over the bridge into the west side of the project, there will be B Street, which will lead back into the project. I know this is hard to imagine as I'm describing it here. And then we've got Vincent Moraga continuing into what will be the future Western Bypass.
Right.
So, you've really got three or four points of ingressing.
Right. Yeah. So, yeah, I'm just thinking about Old Town and then being right next to all those homes too. So, there's going to be some trickiness with that too. But we're not talking about that tonight. Also, you talked about roundabouts. Where, I love roundabouts. Where would they be?
So, we have three roundabouts. We're proposing one semi roundabout. If you look at the top of the park here, you see one of the roundabouts, and this is the one I'm kind of referring to loosely as a roundabout. We have an additional roundabout. It goes just off to the page to the right here. And that's at Alter Vista and Coromel Trail. And then when we come way back down to Old Town, right at First Street and just above Pujo, as you come into the project, is another roundabout.
Okay. And then when, so originally, there was supposed to be a school there.
Correct.
So, as a mom, as, you know, families, you're selling to families, I'm just wondering what that reaction is going to be when there's, I mean, the schools are not close to this area at all. Do we, do we know what's happening in that way? Or how, how these kids are going to be provided for, for schools? Or have you talked to the school district? the school district? I mean, I'm sure you have, but I just know, like, if you're looking to sell to families, you said, right? And workforce, they're going to have kids. And that would be my number one concern, you know, moving into a neighborhood.
Yeah, from my knowledge today and what we know of the school district and this, who knows what happens with rezoning in the future. But our understanding is they would go to Vale Ranch Middle School and Temecula Valley High School. So those are both within about a 10-minute drive or less than four miles.
Yeah, okay.
All phenomenal schools, I should.
Okay, and then. Yeah, I like that the doors are not bright red and bright blue. I was looking for that. I'm like, no, no, don't do it. So that's good. And the batten, like the batten, the horizontal batten, like all of that, and the street view, I think that's really important, that that looks different. I think, you know, number one, and this is going to be something I think the community is, I would think, would be the most concerned about is they're thinking more homes, more traffic. And so when we say infrastructure before building permits, I think that's what Temecula is all about, and that's really important. So we appreciate that for sure. I do. I think that's one of the most important things about this project or any project that we do in the city. So we've been waiting for Alter for a long time, so it's kind of crazy that it's here. So thank you for your presentation. Any other questions from my colleagues? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So, public hearing.
Yeah, we're still in the public hearing, so do we have some public comments?
Yes, we received one from Rocky Hale.
Okay. Rocky Hale?
Would you like to approach?
You were going to talk to us from your seat, huh?
No, I kind of fell asleep a little bit.
Oh, you kind of fell asleep?
No, my question was, I live near Old Town, and right now we've got a problem with dust. And dust mitigation has been a real issue, and the AQMD is aware of it. But we have citizens within our senior community that have respiratory problems, and we'd like to see a little more, you know, like an advanced effort over trying to control. I know it's summer and it hadn't rained for, since April, but we're kind of suffering over there. I mean, there's, it's covering the cars and everything else. I know it's not specific to what this, but it is a problem, and I'd like to address that. My other thing is, right now I understand there's a pause in the grading process, and I think, from what I understand, it has to do with Native American artifact collection or something of that nature. I know they're not doing the grading now. And I didn't know why. And I was trying to, you know, tell the people that I live around, you know. They were all thinking it was going to be dynamited or something like that. So, you know, a lot of rumors and stuff. So I was hoping maybe that, you know, I could get a little help with that. And the third thing I had regarded, like what we used to call off-site engineering. And has to do with sewer, water, drought-resistant plants, stuff like that. I mean, I didn't see, I couldn't tell what the landscaping was going to be like from the slides I saw. So is it going to be mostly grass or, you know, stuff like that, just little details? I mean, we're all kind of looking forward to how it's going to be set up, but, you know, it's going to add something. But we want to see it done right as well, because I plan on being here, you know, been here 22 years now, so going to stick around. But I was hoping maybe that those questions could be addressed.
Okay, thank you. We have any other public comments?
Yes, we've received a public comment from Jim Collins.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Very much what gentleman just said. I just hope that the applicants understand what we're going through. So Alter looks like it's going to be a beautiful place. I have a nice little house that looks like, doesn't look very nice right now because of the dust and the dirt. And I don't think they were actually prepared for that, the easterly winds that blow off. So they are offering us $150 a month as a stifle to keep the dust down. I just got a couple of estimates, you know, $1,200 to pressure wash my house and keep my, get my solar panels cleaned that were put in about a year and a half ago, and they are completely filthy at this time. So $150 a month is just not going to work. $1,200 bucks out of my own pocket to to clean up now. Actually, I didn't spend the $1,200. I'm a, I'm a late 50 gentleman climbing a 30-foot aluminum ladder, pressure washing my house right now. So I hope the applicants take that into consideration. I love your point on the, the main street coming in. The First Street is going to be an entrance. We all know what it looks when, when the hot rod show comes into town or when there's an accident on the 15, everybody comes in that road. So since we eliminated a couple of lanes and put in bike lanes instead of traffic lanes, that's already caused a, a bit of a bottleneck on traffic already there. And I think that's about it. Yeah, that's really it. So thanks, sir. Thanks for your mail.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public comments?
No further requests to speak.
Okay, do, do we want to address anything at this time?
I took some notes if you'd like me to address.
Before I close the public hearing, that'd be great.
So the first public speaker brought up dust mitigation, dust requirements. There's mitigation. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I think between our Public Works Department and the inspectors, we can work with the applicant to address that. Touching on that, the other part of the comment was on AQMD and seniors with respiratory issues, so that's part of the dust mitigation. As far as the grading goes and the pause, right now the applicant is working through addressing the EIR and the mitigation. And that's really all we can say about that, but they are working through that process. In terms of the, you mentioned off-site engineering, sewer water, the drought, the landscaping. The landscaping in general will be drought-tolerant landscaping, and there are graphics in the specific plan, which is available online. And there are some renderings in there that can give residents a good feel for the landscaping that will be part of Alter. And then the second speaker was dust and dirt, and we will address that with the applicant. So I think that answers the majority of the comments.
Yeah, I think, actually, that was a good question about the landscape. So we didn't really talk about landscape much. Do you have anything on that, Scott? Or is that, because we're not really talking about that tonight specifically?
No, landscaping is part of the project. If you have specific questions, their landscape architect is here. But as Matt said, like, due to the slopes, you're not going to see large trees on the slopes. As Colin brought up, you're going to see fire-allowed landscaping up against the Western Bypass. A lot of the project will be that. They're going to put the large trees where they can.
Right.
But in order to keep fire insurance rates down, they're going to do the best they can.
True. Okay, yeah, that's probably, because we usually hear a lot about landscaping, so that's probably why we've got fire hazard going on. Okay. Thank you. I think that helped a lot, and hopefully that helped the public speakers that came out tonight. We appreciate your time coming out.
That would be up to the chair's discretion.
Also, since we're putting in like 40-foot walls, it's, I think it's going to give an opportunity for graffiti.
For what?
Graffiti.
Come, yeah, okay.
Graffiti. So I'm just wondering if the council, you know, who's, who will be responsible for that? Because when we walk out of our house, I used to have a nice, beautiful view of a, of a hillside. Now I got a 40-foot wall that's going to have houses on it. And they're not going to see the graffiti, but every time I walk outside my house, I'm going to see the graffiti. So I'm, I don't know if that's something that the city, that we work with the city council with, or if it would be something that.
Okay, thank you. All right.
The city has an ordinance regarding graffiti. If it's reported, it has to be taken care of within 24 hours by the, in this case with the walls, it would be the HOA. So you just want to report that.
Temecula is really great at taking care of graffiti, that's for sure.
Just to follow up on that, there is a condition of approval for each of the villages that discusses the graffiti as well.
Okay, awesome. Can we take care of the graffiti on the freeway too? That's not part of our city. Can we do that? It's on the sign for Temecula, come like 10, anyway, I saw it today coming. I was like, what? Okay, do we have any other public comments?
None.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead.
So if we can have the applicant have an opportunity to do any rebuttal or additional comments?
Any additional comments?
Thank you for having me up again. First of all, thank you both for your comments. We appreciate that feedback. It's important for us to hear. We do recognize that dust is a part of construction. It's not an excuse. We are doing everything in our power to keep it down. We moisture condition our soils every day. We had received some feedback from the public that there was dust that was nuisance. And we're working by adding more water within reason to the project. There's only so much water we can put on it before we get past what we would call moisture conditioning. In addition to that, we've added a, it's called a binder. It's a synthetic binder. It's almost a layer on top of the dirt. And we've done that to hopefully limit dust. It's a challenge. There's winds. When it gets real windy, we have shut down the project to make sure that dust doesn't get out of control. And AQMD did come out. We had a discussion with them. They came back and were very pleased with the work that had been done on the project site and did not issue any violation. Again, we're committed to doing whatever we need to do to make sure that our neighbors feel like we're, we're doing our part. Thank you for that comment and those feedbacks. And then relative to landscaping, I think it's important to know that, yes, it is fire-hardened, and yes, there is a select palette we're choosing from. But Chris and C2 went to great lengths to make it a beautiful landscape, and we think it's something that's going to be very complimentary to Old Town. And it's not just an afterthought. So, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Thank you for all your work and the projects that you've done in our city so far. We appreciate so much. All right, any other public comments?
None.
None. Okay, I'm going to use this gavel and close the public hearing. All right, so now it's time for commission discussion. So I'm going to start on this end. Adam.
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot more to to really discuss. I think it's pretty clear that the applicant's been working very hard for a long time to bring, to bring this forward. You know, I think we got a lot of questions answered. Hopefully the community and the residents are happy with the questions that were asked and the presentation of what's moving forward here. Gary, you may have said it earlier, or maybe it was Lando, but it feels like this project's been kind of a long time coming. We've been talking about this for, for a long time, and I'm impressed with what I see. And I think it's going to be a very warm addition to Temecula, and it's going to have, to your point, I think, a significant impact on, on Old Town. You know, come a few years from now, it's going to be very, very different. Old Town's already been changed, but I think this brings a whole nother element, especially to the, the family side of things that, that we've been talking about, you know, keeping in Old Town as well.
Fernando?
Yeah, it looks like a great project. There's a lot of housing. I only have one concern that I wanted to talk about with the commission that I think it's kind of, doesn't have enough parking. I know it's, I know it's meeting the parking requirement, but looking at all the other developments that we have here in our residential areas that we have that are similar to this, I feel like there's not enough parking, so I wanted to see what you guys think.
Parking for guests?
Parking for guests, yes, parking for guests, because they all do, they all have almost two-car garages plus additional. They are meeting parking requirements, but I just wanted to have that conversation with everyone.
Thoughts?
If you believe that there's enough parking, then.
I have some comments in there. Are you finished with all your comments?
That was my only, and my second one is canopy. You know, I love, the community walks a lot. They like walking in the evening. And I think having more trees would, would be great, but, you know, the, the high fire, I understand the high fire zone. So, you know, if staff could work with them to provide as much trees as they can to, and also meet the limits of fire requirements, that, that'd be my only concerns.
Okay. Gary?
Well, to address my colleague's concerns on parking, I agree 100%. As we drive through the town, through the city, it's very apparent that there's a lot of cars in town and there's not enough room for them. Usually, if you drive down some of the streets, you can, you can see how busy it is. And that creates problems with mail delivery, with trash pickup, et cetera, et cetera. So in an overall arching statement, I totally agree, the whole parking thing, is this insufficient? And I think long-term it needs to be addressed. I don't know what the answers are, but I think that we're seeing an evolution where the streets are becoming more and more congested with people because there's just a lot more people living in houses because it's just so difficult for affordability and that type of thing. A whole myriad of, of problems that contribute to that. So anyhow, I, I agree with that. I don't know what my colleagues will say down there, but you want me to have my quick comments. I think this is so far a good, good project. Certainly what we envisioned when we approved the, the specific plan a long time ago. It's great to see it moving along. 500 new homes is going to be helpful for the inventory. You know, for those that, that are very concerned about affordability, as all of us probably are, there is a component of reality in that, in that the market is going to do what the market is going to do. And certainly people that are in the business of developing have whatever interest they have in, in accomplishing their project. Certainly financial is a big part of that. But I don't, I don't know if, if we can completely address the problem because clearly, you know, and no, no, none of our colleagues want to put, put you in a spot like this is what they're going to be. But we all know basically what the market is around here. And this is going to help, but it certainly doesn't address probably a certain component that, that I don't know if they'll ever be able to provide answers for that one because it's just a matter of economics most of the time, I think. And it's easy to forget that. Anyhow, I love the diversity in housing stock on this. You're providing a whole variety of opportunity for folks. I think that's great. In this environment, we need it. In this economy, we definitely need it. So that's good. I love the open space, you know, keep doing open space wherever we can. As I said, we can't get enough of it. It does introduce some affordability into, into the market that we don't see right now. But as I said, it's not going to address a lot of the, the spectrum that includes it from A to B on, A to Z on, on that subject. Encouraged by your willingness to work with the city on some of the complaints that we brought up. They're not conditions, obviously, but they're, you know, it's just a matter of give and take. And I think it's important to communicate that to, to you as well. And then the final comment, I'll say the schools were offered property for, to provide for that need in the area. We don't have any schools west of the 15 presently. Now we're looking at 500 homes. Here we have a multi-unit facility down to the west of us, or the northwest of us, that's on this side of the freeway now. And there's going to be kids, and they need to go to school, and people are going to need to get them to school. So when the traffic happens, when people are driving across the freeway to drop their kids off, I don't want them to blame you. I don't want them to blame us, but clearly I think the blame rests with, with the school district who has the, the ability to decide whether it's needed or not. And they, they make those decisions. I don't know what they are. They're, they're qualified to do that. But I think it was a big mistake to ignore the western part of the city. And if there was a way for them to reconsider, I would encourage them to do so. I know they have their own economics they have to deal with. But we see it at every school in town. It's, you avoid it if you live here because there's so many cars waiting to pick kids up. And it's so different than it was 20 years ago or more when people walked to school, but doesn't seem like anybody does now. So that's one, one problem I see down the road that's going to, not necessarily this development, but everything that happens on this side of the freeway, and it will continue to develop. That's going to put pressure on the part where, where the services are provided, and that's on the other side. And we all know what the choke points are on the freeway on, on and off-ramp. So that's just a comment on the, on the fact that I think that an opportunity may have been missed. And maybe not enough long-term thinking was put into that. But those are decisions that are beyond our pay grade, and we would, I would certainly encourage, you know, for those that are in that, in those seats to make that evaluation, to do that in the future. Because we all know how traffic, how important traffic is in this town for everybody, and it's like almost on the top, the top of everybody's list. So we do everything we can to try to limit that. This is beyond our, our control, obviously. And I, I do want to make that clear for all those that may be upset with the fact that we're going to see traffic increase probably for certain times and in certain areas. And, and it's not often clear maybe why all the reasons that are behind that are. So anyhow, good project so far. I am very interested in what happens beyond this down the road. Hopefully we'll be around to see that happen. And, and I just think, once again, as Adam said, and I think my colleagues agree, is that this really will change the dynamics down here a lot and in a real positive way, I think. And we haven't heard a lot from people tonight, but certainly the ones we heard from that live down here have concerns are being addressed, hopefully. And it seems like everyone is pretty supportive of the project as a whole, from what I can gather. So those are my comments. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to make a comment on the parking?
The only thing I'd add on the parking, I mean, I, you know, we'll never be able to find enough parking for all the cars in town. I, I don't see that. I'm, I was impressed looking at this, that the, each unit had two-car garage, that it was side by side. And I, and I also think, and obviously everyone's going to have to commute out for certain things. But at least my, my impression of, of this facility, or this project here, is a lot more of some of the walkable stuff and the connection here with Old Town as well. So I, I don't have as much of a concern for what. So, I, I don't have as much of a concern for what's been presented here. I think it's worth noting, you know, maybe future development down there, make sure that we're still addressing some of the parking, but I, I think it would be next to impossible to try to account for parking for every single person and looking at, even like we've talked about with Uptown as well, being that little bit more walkable type of, type of a district, I think probably alleviates maybe what we're anticipating a problem with. So, I think it's worth noting, I just don't feel it's a major concern at this point.
Okay. I think also, I know with the Old Town Local Advisory Committee, they're working on parking in Old Town, correct? I mean, that's a, a big deal coming up. And I understand the concern, you know, with not having enough parking for guests, but I don't know how that would change everything that you guys have in place right now, might be tough. So, one thing that I did wanna say is, you know, a lot has been said about Old Town and improving what we have here. And I think, I think it does have the potential of doing that for sure because we have families and, you know, people that care about where they live, right? So, they're gonna care about what happens in Old Town. And I think that's been one of the best things about having this Old Town Local Advisory Committee with some residents who actually live in Old Town and experience it. And I think there's a lot that happens here that, that we don't even know about late at night. And so, having homes that close, those people are gonna be concerned about that. And that's a good thing, that we keep each other honest with what's happening in our town. So, I like that a lot. And I can tell that a lot of work has gone into this, by the architect, everybody, everybody involved. And so, that does not go unnoticed. I know we don't really understand it completely, I don't, but we do appreciate all the work that has gone into it. And I think Gary's right, this is a missed opportunity for the school district, and we're gonna be sorry that there's no school on this side. That looked really good at the beginning when that was happening, that seemed very wise. So, I'm, I really like the project. And I think with having as much density as you have, it looks really good. Like, it could look like one big row of homes, and it doesn't. From, from the slides that Scott was able to show us and being able to see his street scene, it looks very nice. So, I think I, I like the project. So, are we ready to make a motion?
I wanna make another comment.
You're gonna make another comment?
Yes, I would like to ask the architect, I mean, he's the one that designed this project, right? You have parallel parking in Park One, you have parallel parking in Park Two. Would you be, would it be, you know, something reasonable that you could let, maybe include some more parallel parking in Park Three and Park Five? And it'll be a cohesive design throughout the project, and I believe the additional parking will, I mean, it's not, I'm not trying to solve a problem. I, I know this parking situation is, there's a lot of units. I'm just trying to provide more parking for the guests and more parking that wanna visit this area because once you're up here, you're up here. You know, the next really parking location is in, is in the downtown, you know, and, and I don't think it, it will modify the design much and it'll be cohesive throughout the, the design, but I would like to ask the architect, if that's okay?
If, if that's gonna happen, then if we can reopen the public hearing?
Are we all okay with doing that? Reopening the public hearing and having them come up, or shall we just make a determination here?
Just like to ask him, he's the one that designed it.
That's to your discretion.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing, so you can come on up, Mr. Nick.
Okay, so you got both the Nicks up here, we're both from the same firm here, so just to not make it too confusing. Valid question, appreciate the question on parking, that's, that's not a new thing for us. We, we get faced with that challenge wherever we are, asked to solve a, a puzzle, cuz it, it really is a puzzle. So, I'll just keep it brief, and it really, it comes down to trade-off. You can provide more parking, but then you give up a little bit more open space. So, it, it just comes to that, and it's important to, for us to all remember that not only we meet the parking requirement, but we exceed it. So, as much as that could be a challenge, it, it just makes it a little bit more difficult to take something that's also desirable and which do you favor?
Thank you.
I do have one additional comment based on the parallel parking. We are only accounting for parking within each neighborhood. We have not numbered out the number of parallel parking along Alta Vista. There is extra parking outside of the villages that are not incorporated or counted toward each village. Specifically in, near C2 and C3, along Village, along Alter, there are parallel spots next to the park that's also going south from that, from that project. We haven't, we haven't been able to count it cuz we can't count it toward the actual project. So, it is noted, there are extra spaces available in addition to the additional parking spaces that we are providing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Solis, I'm, I'm not an architect, but I, I did wanna add to these gentlemen's explanation that one other thing that's not dictated here, or depicted here in the five-acre park, there is a dedicated parking lot for that park, which has twenty to thirty spots in it in addition to these. Again, not part of the scope of the project here, but wanted to point that out, that will be included as well.
Thank you very much, thanks for answering the question. Okay, any more discussion?
No, I'm okay.
You're good? Okay, all right. Oh, yes. I'm gonna close that public hearing. Thank you. All right, any other discussion before we have a motion? We've had a lot of discussion, are we ready? Okay.
All right, then I would make a motion that we approve planning application numbers PA 230438, 0439, and 0440, subject to the conditions of approval.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes four zero. Awesome, I think we can invite our chair back in, so he can have fun with the rest of the meeting. Now that we've done all the work, he can come back in. Well, while he's coming back in, should I go ahead, or should we wait for him?
Let's wait for him cuz he'll be taking over the meeting again.
Oh, okay. I was having so much fun. I like this girl. All right. All right, it's all yours.
Okay. Okay, next, I think we have commissioner reports. Anything?
The only thing that I wanted to mention tonight, it's really more for record, anyone watching, to the guests here tonight, thank you so much for coming out to join us. There's always comments and discussions that are happening outside of these chambers or outside of these meetings, and I wish there'd be more of that in here. I will pay attention to some of those. I've, I've read a lot of the comments, concerns, suggestions, you know, the things that everybody agrees with. But I just wanna reiterate that, you know, we value the feedback, I'll speak for myself, I value the feedback, I value the participation. You guys coming out here on your own time in the evening, spending a couple hours with us shows how important it is to you. And I would hope that for not just this project, but anything that's coming through the planning, if, if there are concerns, or you just wanna be part of the process, or, or see more about what's really happened, come here because this, this is really the, the avenue for it, and it gives us the opportunity here directly from, from those people that have the concerns, rather than try to read it online and into some other forum. So, again, for you guys coming out, thank you so much for being here. And staff, thank you very much for addressing some of the concerns that I know were already out there as well. And to my colleagues, thanks for a great discussion tonight.
Okay, yeah, I agree with you, that's great. I know as a citizen coming out here and taking the time to do that, it's, it's hard cuz you're working all day and you've got your own life, but it, it does mean a lot, and we do listen, we do hear you, and so it is important. So, I, I am gonna issue a challenge to all of my colleagues tonight. Are you listening, Fernando? Yeah, okay. I went on a ride-along Saturday night in Old Town. Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh, you guys have all got to do that, not even kidding. So, it will open your eyes, it will give you a new perspective. And I was here till the bitter end, two-twenty in the morning. Yes, me, me. And so, I would hope that each of you would take the challenge to do that, and also our city council members, if they haven't done it yet because I, the metro team is amazing. Sergeant Sandoval, who's in charge, she is in, she is Marge and in charge, and she is, but does it with a velvet glove. And they respect her, and she's so good. And, and I had Deputy Murrow, who was my, my guy, and he was awesome. And he also showed me some homeless hotspots in the city, which I'm very concerned about, have been for a while. So, that was very eye-opening and informative. And I think it just, I, I just felt like after that evening, I just feel like I can be a better planning commissioner, honestly, with that information. And there's a lot of fun things happening in Old Town, but it sure changes at ten o'clock. And so, I appreciate the police presence that we have here. I felt really safe because I was in a police car. People were looking at me like, why is she in that police car? What did she do wrong? And, but it was, it was really great to see a different perspective. You know, like you're watching the families and they're all here, and it's great. There's so much action and things happening in Old Town, and all of that is so good. And then there just becomes, it becomes a little bit what we don't want. And it's very interesting to watch that change and watch how the police are, they're on top of it. Like, when I was talking to Sergeant Sandoval, we're standing out there, you know, it's like twelve-thirty, one o'clock at night, and she's like, I'm listening to you, but you can see my eyes going everywhere, I'm watching everything. And they're, they're so on top of it, it's amazing. Made me really appreciate our police in this city, not just Metro, but there were others that were there that were doing overtime. In order to keep it good in Old Town, I mean, there were like ten police specifically there for Old Town. So, I appreciated that, I wish we didn't have to have that, but I appreciate that we can have that. So, anyway, that's my challenge, I'm leaving it with you guys, let me know, let me know, I'll let you know how to make that happen.
Thank you.
Gary?
I don't have any report to make tonight, thank you.
I don't have a party there.
I just wanted to mention, we saw the homeless report this week and how many properties, I think, that have been cleaned up this year. I think there was seventy-nine properties, seventy-nine camps that were, that were cleaned out this year. And, you know, another team that has done a really fantastic job. And the number of people that have, they've helped get off the street and be returned to their families is, is significant and something that should be, should be mentioned. Okay, next, any subcommittees? Nothing? No. Okay, we'll go on to Community Development Director's report, Matt?
Just a reminder about the APA Conference in Riverside in September. Chair Hagel has expressed interest, I know he's signed up, or we're getting him signed up, but if you're interested, let us know, and if you're not interested, let us know. And then tomorrow morning, we have the Old Town Local Advisory Committee meeting here at ten AM, if you're interested. And that's all I have for tonight.
Tomorrow morning, did you say?
Tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Matt, what are the dates on that Riverside event?
September twenty-eighth through October first.
So, it's Saturday through Tuesday.
Thank you.
I know you gave us a little thing, but there was not like a website or anything on that? Why do we look up just to?
I'll send you the website.
Okay, that'd be great, cuz I do wanna look at that.
Yeah, they do, they have all the classes on there already, so, which is good. So, Public Relation, or Public Relations, Public Works. Public Relations for Public Works.
So, the two rehab projects, Pachanga Parkway and Butterfield Stage to the city limits, just past Vale Middle School, those two projects are done with the rehab, so they were done prior to school starting. But they do have stripings still to do, the loop detectors, so the, that'll still be complete over the next one or two weeks. And then we're running right into Rainbow Canyon Road, that's gonna be rehabbed through, through the city limits. If you recall, the county did their portion, now we're coming and doing ours, and that starts September ninth. So, Rainbow Canyon Road, September ninth, that's gonna be a day and night crew. So, we will do the night time work in the, basically outside past TCI. And then the daytime would be where the residents are, so that we're not disturbing their sleep at night. And so, that's about a ten-to-twelve day duration project. They're gonna get it done quick cuz they have two crews running day and night. So, that'll happen, once again, starting September ninth. And then our Ox Lane project, you've been seeing here on the freeway, that Ox Lane going from Temecula Parkway up to Rancho California Road, they're moving great on that, just about to complete it, so mark your calendars down. We're gonna have a ribbon-cutting ceremony October first. So, we encourage you guys to come to that if you can. And then French Valley, that's going really well, just moving along, and we're gonna finish it as, as expected, probably right around beginning of the year. Even though the contractor has till May to complete it, he's gonna get it done a little bit earlier. And that's about it for us, unless you have questions for me?
Ask a question? So, on Pachanga and Butterfield Stage, they haven't, they haven't adjusted the lights yet, right?
No, they're on recall because once the loops got taken out with the rehab, we have to wait until the loops get put back in.
I was like, oh, gosh.
They're just running on their regular phase cycle, you know, so it's gonna run through the left turn, the, the through and everything else, yeah.
Okay, so when will that?
The loops for Pachanga going in on the twenty-sixth, so next week, and then Butterfield shortly after. So, probably mid-next week for Butterfield.
Thank you.
I've heard a couple of people complain about the timing of doing Butterfield down along Temecula, not, Temecula Parkway. And if you could just explain, so it's on the record as to, you know, why it couldn't have been done sooner? You know, obviously, it's a very complex project, not just doing the rehab on the road.
Yeah, you know, mostly because when we do the rehabs and you're doing a grind and you're going down two, three inches, it's not like a slurry project. When you do that and you start to do the actual paving, the paving has to be at a certain temperature. So, that's why we do it as late in summer as you can, because the hotter it is, the better that asphalt binds. And so, that's the reason we try to do it in the hottest month, you know, because it's, it's, you're basically cooking the asphalt. It'll get up to two-hundred-and-eighty degrees, and you want it to be that hot in order to bind really well, so it doesn't fall apart. It would be nice to do it a little earlier, but Temecula is blessed with some cooler months even when it's summer. You know, we, it was pretty cool come June, really didn't get, start getting hot till July. So, the temperatures just don't work for us, so you want it really hot. And so, that's the reason that we try to do it as late as possible, but not get into the school year.
And then there was the drainage that is being done in conjunction with the county as well, isn't that the case?
The drainage with the county?
The drainage going to Temecula Creek?
Oh, yeah, that, that, that'll be another couple of years before we do that. But we wanted to get at least, I, I know what you're saying, Commissioner. We did from the bridge to the city limits, we didn't do any further out towards Temecula Parkway. So, you're gonna see that that portion maybe is a little bit in worse condition.
Right.
However, the reason for it is what you're saying, two years from now, there's gonna be a big- However, the reason for it is what you're saying. Two years from now, there's gonna be a big storm drain project
Right.
coming in, and really didn't want to do that twice. We saved the money.
Right.
You know, and we'll just finish that portion when the big 10-foot diameter storm drain goes into Temecula Creek.
Good, thank you. I think that's it. Anybody have anything else?
We're right along.
Okay. Actually, I've been thinking about it, so. Maybe one that's a little bit cooler. So we will adjourn this meeting till, what is it, the September 4th, is it? Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.